If I can have your attention, we'll get started. We're going to call the meeting to order for April 10th, 2019.
You have students?
Yes, they're closed.
We are very excited to have some students come on up.
It'd be hard to hear in here.
Yeah, it's gonna be echoey. I have to say that this was particularly fun because we have Thomas, and it happens to be that my wife's name is Rebecca, and we have Rebecca.
Your name is Thomas.
That's right. So we have Thomas and Rebecca and Eva here to say the pledge tonight. So it's very easy for me to remember them. Eva? Eva, oh, thank you, Eva. Alright, so where's our flag?
Right behind you.
Oh, we gotta turn around, guys, ready?
I. United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal, liberty, and justice for all.
Very nice.
There you go, Thomas, thank you very much. Eva? Oh, Eva, yep, and as we're back, have a great day.
Thank you very much. Motion on the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, changes, alterations? All in favor? Pam's looking at us for once. We don't have to remind her what the vote was?
You mean, uh, Phillips?
Yeah. Uh, there is no manifest tonight, ladies and gentlemen. We had a meeting last week. Nominations are none, resignations are none. Superintendent's report.
Uh, I just wanted to say that my report will be primarily handled through the presentation I'm doing this evening, thank you.
We have, I believe, three committee reports, policies. I know what the rather likely one is.
No, it's not, actually.
Oh, good.
We met on April 8th. Um, Larry Heath, Pete Broderick, Superintendent Ambrose, and Assistant Principal Dawson and I attended, reviewed policies from sections I and J, which concern instruction and students. Um, the changes we examined were recommended by the New Hampshire School Board Association. Two of them are brand new, ten require updates, one is an obsolete form, and two need reaffirmation. And the revisions to the ones we reviewed on the, um, on the Aids will be forwarded to the school board in an upcoming meeting. Let's see what else. Oh, there's extra things. We decided to add approval of the agenda to our future agendas so that we can ensure that everyone agrees on the agenda items, and that's all I have.
Uh, could I just say to the board members in both speaking, you kinda have to get up much closer, even if you're using your NPR voice, which I love to use, but it's a boomy out there, so it's hard for them to hear you. So I just wanted everyone to know that.
Could I get some help posting the agenda on the projector? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question regarding the policy committee? Policy committee has been meeting, um, at, I think, 4:45 on the Wednesdays prior to our first board, our first Wednesday board meeting. Will that be the schedule going forward?
It's currently meeting Mondays at eleven, eleven thirty.
Good morning.
Could I, I, I'd like to register, um, an opinion on, um, committees meeting during the workday, because that's very difficult for people. Those are public meetings, and it's very difficult for people to attend. I'd like to wonder, I wonder why you would be choosing to do that?
I hate to do it this way, Pam, but you'll have to share what you want.
It's a temporary measure because we had a conflict between subcommittee meetings, and this spring we're meeting at eleven thirty Mondays to continue our work on updating the manual. Hopefully, starting in August, we'll go back to a four-thirty time on a Wednesday, but we're not sure which Wednesday yet. So, um, your point is noted. Thank you.
We talked about that, actually, last Monday.
We did discuss it.
Okay, facilities, Kim?
Uh, facilities met Wednesday, April 3rd at four-thirty. The members present were Larry Heath, Jamie Fitzpatrick, and Jim Baker. Also present were Matt Angel and Steve Riley. Uh, Larry and Jamie are new members of the facilities committee. Matt Angel presided over the election of our chairman. Jim Baker was elected. Uh, Baker was the only holdover from the previous committee, present at the March 6th meeting. So he reviewed and approved the minutes, which were written by Kristen McNulty. We reviewed a revised format proposed by Matt Angel for reporting on status of trust, reserve, and revolving fund accounts reporting, and the revised format was approved unanimously. We received a status report on construction of the dugout and the softball, that the softball boosters are donating to the district to be built at Chase Fields. The boosters have applied to Kingston for construction permits, and I've since been told that the, uh, permits have been received, along with a certificate of insurance for construction, so they're all set to go ahead with building the dugouts. We didn't discuss the importance of creating an up-to-date capital improvement plan. Uh, CIP plan inventories all physical assets of the district, and it's designed for managing and funding anticipated maintenance and improvements over multiple years. Matt Angel discussed the process he recommends in developing the new capital improvement plan. The process would involve recommendations developed by the business administrator in consultation with the administration, the facilities director, the facilities committee, and the public. The next facilities committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 1st, at four-thirty P.M., and the public is invited. That's it. Uh, there was no finance since the last meeting?
Yeah, no, we're off to it. Um, Jamie, I'm sorry, but what was the next date I said?
The Excellence and Student Achievement Committee met this evening. Uh, we'll be giving a report on that at our next board meeting. The next meeting of that committee is on Wednesday, May 15th, at four-thirty.
Uh, there's a lot of really exciting and important work going on right now with regard to potential strategic planning and goal-setting for our district, so if parents are wondering about the direction of the district, we'd love to have you at that meeting.
Finance, the next meeting is April, or is, uh, May 1st, at four-thirty P.M.
I have, just in case something drugged somebody's memory, I have no other committee reports, am I still correct on that?
Sorry. I think budget meeting tomorrow night at seven.
Okay, Larry's not here, so I didn't.
Yeah, the budget committee is meeting tomorrow night at seven. In the library.
In the library, yes.
The budget committee is meeting tomorrow night at seven in the library.
Library will be back?
Library will be back.
Good, alright. Adam, how you doing?
I'm doing good, I'm doing good. So I have nothing new to report from the freshman, junior, and senior councils, but the sophomore council will be holding their Pizza Fest party on Friday, May 3rd, at six P.M. at the high school. So, if you guys want to write that one down. Um, on Monday, April 8th and April 9th, Tuesday, April 9th, we, the student council collected money to donate to the Jimmy Fund to help, uh, to help fight cancer, and we raised three-hundred-fifty-eight dollars. Um, the F L T, for Earth Day, the F L Ts with different options are set for Friday, April 19th. Uh, the raffle basket items are being bought, and will be, and we will be shutting off the school lights for the duration of F L T.
Is it?
That's it.
I'm happy. First public comments. Anyone got something to say? If not, I assume the second public comment's gonna be the big one, but, you know, anything of the first public comment, going once, going twice. Can I show my age? Old America. Old business. Pam?
I'm going to read a motion on the policies we have on the agenda tonight for first and second read before discussion. I move that we approve new policies DGA, DI, DIH, DKA, and EBB. Repeal old policies DJF, EB dash R, EBCE dash R, EE, EEA dash R, EEA C, and EA H. Reaffirm policies EBBB, EBBC, and approve as revised the following policies DBC, DBJ, DFA, DFF, DH, DIC, DJC, DJE, DM, DO, EBBBA, EBBBA dash R, EBCE, EC, ECF, and EEA with first and second read. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have, well. For these policies, I had asked for comments concerning the revisions from the finance and from the facilities committees on a couple of them, and DFA, the investment policy, has some confusion when it comes to who makes the decisions about investing district funds. So I'd like to amend my motion to table DFA until the policy subcommittee can revisit that one, because we just got a, an email from the New Hampshire School Board Association's attorney offering us more advice. So I'd like to table DFA. And for DO, I wanted to add the word "written" next to "commitments" to fund the school yearbook, and have it say "written commitments," because we shouldn't be, um, discussing commitments to fund the school book unless it's a written commitment from the communities. So I added the word "written commitments" down for that one, and that's, that's an amendment to DO that I'd like to add. For EC, Buildings and Grounds Alterations, we have a twenty, two-point-five-k-dollar floor for having any alterations with that cost number, um, at two-point-five thousand or less, um, can be approved by the BA. If it's above that dollar amount, it goes to the board for approval, and the, uh, the committee wanted to know if you wanted to change that number of twenty-five hundred to a different floor, but I believe we've decided that's an adequate number, and we'd keep it as is.
That was a recommendation by the finance committee?
Um, I believe finance is fine with the twenty-five hundred floor for board approval.
The chair is, we haven't had a meeting about it, but...
Yeah, and I have no objection to the twenty-five hundred either. I thought that was a reasonable amount.
I don't have any.
The attorney said it's up to the board, and with inflation, we may want to alter it, but it seems fine for now, so I recommend we keep it as is. And let's see, what else?
I have a question about one of them.
Can I just speak about the twenty-five hundred for a second?
Sure.
I did speak with Will Phillips at NHSBA today regarding the twenty-five hundred-dollar floor. I, I'm fine with it, and, and Will just made the point that that floor amount was set in 2013, and it doesn't do nearly as much now as it did in 2013. He said that most districts do thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars at this point. It's been seven years or six years. So we just wanted you to know that before you make a decision, and I, I'm not asking you to change it, I just wanted you to be aware that he, he felt like that was probably low, at twenty-five hundred.
Well, it, it, as I understand it, the twenty-five hundred is without board authorization.
Right.
You know, so, you know, get that, I mean...
It doesn't go very far, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that was one of our points. We were like, yes, no, you know. So after twenty-five hundred goes to the board, but I can't imagine any problem.
No, I don't have any problem. I just want folks to be aware.
Yeah.
And I've got, I've got one more.
Sure, I'm sorry, Pam, I just want to ask one question. Um, the other, the other finance chair, Jim, do you have a suggestion to go to thirty-five hundred? I mean, that's information we didn't have when we discussed it.
Um, well, we can table this for additional discussion, right?
Okay.
Sure.
Why don't we do that so the finance committee can talk about it?
Yeah, good idea.
We've got a meeting on the 17th, I think.
There's no rush.
Yeah.
DFA, okay. No, we're tabling DFA and EC, Buildings and Grounds Alterations. And I've got one more revision to the policies which you've reviewed. EEA, Student Transportation Services. Salter Transportation asks that we add a section to EEA Student Transportation indicating that animals, pets, and vaping will not be permitted on school buses. So, to accommodate salter under student conduct on school buses, I have added a sentence. Animals are not, animals, pets are not permitted on school buses. Vaping is not permitted on school buses.
What are more to add?
Those are my only revisions to the policies you've reviewed. Does anyone else have anything?
Yeah, and I apologize if I was supposed to address to you previously.
No worries.
I was supposed to do it in the meeting, um, but I have a number of comments. On DFF, uh, income from school shops, sales, and services, we specifically say that, uh, it'll be reimbursement of costs, and I don't know if that's the best policy. It might be better, uh, you know, we have kids in, in shops that are gonna be doing some services. That could be a good learning experience to be able to see how you run a business, what do you do for profit, where do you set limits, et cetera. So I, I don't know that it makes sense to just say it's just gonna be cost-only. I think we are, are missing a learning opportunity there, um, for the students. So that was on DFF. Now, I don't know if you want me to hit these separately, or pause for each counter-comment?
Go to that one first, hold on. So would you like to amend this as written?
Before we do that, could we have Matt Angel speak to the question that, um, I just don't wanna, he, he's the expert in that area in terms of school finance, I just don't wanna modify a policy that would affect the overall picture. So Jamie, can you say your point again?
I have one right here.
Can you repeat the question?
So on DFF, we have shop services, and it says in the policy that, uh, we would only get reimbursed for costs, and I thought that that was missing a learning opportunity for students to understand better how to run a business and how businesses work if they were able to incorporate profits into that services.
Yeah, we can add that if you want, but we have to be careful.
Matt, if you could, could you go to the podium, sorry, but, um, there are a little bit of uncharted water in the caffeine.
We can definitely add that, but we have to be careful not to compete with, um, entities that would do this for profit, because we don't want to take away their business.
Understood, but if they're adding a profit, it's a little bit more expensive versus the outside entity, than if you're doing it at cost, it's even cheaper against the outside entity, so it's...
Yes.
It's more detrimental to the outside agency if you're not having a profit.
Yeah, and then at some point, what do you want to do with the surplus that's generated from the, from the profits? Because it's just gonna keep on growing.
Sure, I, I would advocate that those would belong to the shop services, so they make, they make profits in the services, they invest it right back into their shop for whatever they deem is needed in their shop.
Yep, we can definitely propose something along those lines.
So maybe we table that for further discussion, or maybe we can amend it here, I don't know what people's thoughts are.
I'd like to table.
Yeah, I, I would like to table just to make sure that the language doesn't conflict with any other statistics.
But that's a great idea.
It's a great idea, yeah.
So we'll table that.
Um, under DGD, credit cards, I, I would like to make amendment that we add a monthly reconciliation of charges against valid POs. I did not see that in the controls, and I think...
So DGD was approved at our last meeting?
DGD? Oh, was it?
It was on the agenda.
Okay.
But we can revisit it if you'd like.
We already approved it, you have additional...
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll write up my comment on that.
Okay.
Other people are interested, we send it around rather than talking about it here.
And that's your changes?
Yeah, on DI, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting, I didn't see in there a, a monthly reporting at, at a minimum of the fiscal accounting. Minimum, I think, would be at least quarterly. All I read in there is a yearly review, and from a financial controls perspective, once a year, seems to be a, a long period of time.
Is that DI?
Uh, yes.
No, no problem with adding monthly, that would be fine. I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Angel, and he's nodding, so I'm just reflecting that.
So where, where are we adding monthly? What sentence?
Oh, I, I just made the notes, I have to mark.
It's up there, can you look up at the screen? Oh, I'm sorry.
If I can see that far.
Uh, we're, somewhere up there, it's, it talks about a, a yearly review.
So it says that the boards are received by answer, do you want it on a monthly basis? Monthly?
Yeah, and I, I would prefer, uh, monthly might be too much. I, I prefer monthly, but I would think it'd have to be a minimum of four.
I would say quarterly, do quarterly then, I think that would work. Because it also says that the school board may ask for a statement report at any time. If we have the standard quarterly report, that's fine, but if something else triggers...
Yeah, quarterly makes sense to me. Just yearly seems too long.
Yeah, well, the board can just, uh, uh, I mean, the point has been noted by myself and Mr. Angel that the board would like quarterly or relatively monthly reports, that we'll just consider that the request per policy. There isn't really necessarily a need to, to, uh, change the policy if it says that the board can request it at any time.
We've been getting monthly reports.
Yeah.
From the business administrator.
Yeah, and, and that's fine.
So is there any change to this policy?
No, I think we're okay. Jamie's, Jamie, are you okay, Mr. Patrick?
Yeah.
Okay.
So long as, so long as we're getting it in a means to be able to ensure proper financial controls.
Okay.
Hey, thanks.
Want to, uh, kind of revamp the motion?
Petty cash, I guess I have a question for administration on this. Uh, with a credit card policy, do we still need a petty cash position? I know from a business perspective, we've gotten rid of most petty cash accounts, we use, uh, just the credit card accounts, procurement cards, is there still a need for a petty cash account with the approval of credit cards?
Yes, each of the locations sometimes has, uh, cash outlays, they have to do, like, uh, for example, if UPS comes in, or even the postal service with like a returned envelope, they have to pay right there on the spot for that.
And that's got to be cash, your own cards won't work.
It's petty cash, but there, it's a small dollar, I believe, total district-wide, and you're only talking about two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Okay. On the DKA payroll procedures, uh, the last paragraph, uh, talks about, uh, does a requirement exist today, as my question is, does a requirement exist today as regards union dues in that past paragraph? The Janus decision changed the rules on that? Is that included in the things that are, are informed on?
That's DKA?
Yes.
And what was your question, I'm sorry?
So it talks about the, the information that's, that's going out on the, on the payroll. Do we have a notification as to the requirements of the Janus decision as regards union dues and voluntarily opting in?
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
So the Janus decision is deducting union dues?
Correct, so, so, uh, as part of the payroll process, is it, is it a known fact that, uh, those have to get opted in?
Yes.
So that, that is incorporated?
Right, yes.
Yes.
Okay. I couldn't hear Jamie either, I...
Yeah.
I, I really do need to say, you have to really speak into the microphone, the room is boomy.
Okay.
I, I couldn't hear you myself.
And just a comment on EBB, that's a safety one, I, I thought that the, the markup on that was excellent, I thought it was, uh, very well done. Thank you.
Before we move on, I've got a comment about DKA. You have more, Jamie?
Uh, just one that I thought was some inconsistencies, a couple inconsistencies.
Sorry if I make my comment...
Sure, go ahead.
While DKA is up there. Um, page eighteen on that one, chair, Madam Chair? Yeah. Under payday schedule, Matt, you're gonna need to address this, I think. It says there shall be no salary advances. We were gonna strike that?
Yes.
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 I, I don't know how much information is out there, because it's some negotiation information, I mean, uh, I don't, that I don't want to share.
Yeah.
Um, but, but there is some, uh, in some negotiation, there's some payroll timing that may occur that may make it so that it ends up as an advance. We're, we're not talking large dollars, however, it would be, um, against this particular policy.
I, I did speak with Will Phillips, and that does need to be struck from the policy based on the negotiations. And for the public, Will Phillips is our attorney through the NHSBA, he does our policy advising, for a very low annual fee, I might add.
So we're striking the sentence right here, there shall be no salary advances? All right.
Yeah. Thank you, I forgot about that.
So the two that I thought were inconsistencies is ECAF, that's Audio-Visual Surveillance on a Bus. It says that you're only allowed to look at the video of where the complaint is, or what the complaint was about. Uh, and my concern would be if you have to go through the entire video to find that section that the complaint was about. I don't, I don't think people should be in the position of having seen something else untoward occurring in the other part of the video, and then be required to ignore that.
Yeah, I think that that's a, uh... There are different levels of investigation. Um, I hear your concern and understand your perspective. In practice, if we saw, if I'm looking to see if a student has an item that's inappropriate on the bus, and five minutes before I see a student pounding someone on the head with their fist, we're not gonna, we're going to address that. But the, the, the problem is that with all of our videos, we need to be careful, because there are laws regarding the scope and, and amount of investigation that can occur, and this policy is congruent with that. That would lead to a separate investigation, right? But as part of the investigation that you're on, you'd have to stay with what you're investigating, and there's also components with what can and can't be shared with parents with regard to viewing videos.
Yep.
Their rights are limited to only what pertains to their child.
I, I just want to make sure the administration, whoever's reviewing it, is not in a situation of being required by policy to ignore something that shouldn't happen.
Thank you, sir. I can assure you that would never happen, but I can understand how it could be interpreted that way, and it might be worth clarifying that language in the future, but I wouldn't hold up the policy for that, we could just amend it in the future.
I'm, I'm fine with that, too.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you very much.
And the last one was just EEA, Student Transportation Services, references going to the board's transportation committee, but I don't believe we have a transportation committee.
We used to.
Transportation is handled by the, uh, uh, business administrator? So I have never heard of a school board transportation committee.
It's a throwback to twenty-five years ago.
Okay, so we could just modify that to say, thank you very much, Mr. Fitzpatrick, that's a great point, we would want to modify that to say to administration.
This is the last paragraph, I believe.
Yep, great, great catch, thank you.
Last paragraph, page thirty-six.
Oh, thank you. So should it be, if you look at the screen up there, as a last appeal, the parent make request to appear before the school board?
Yes, that would be appropriate, thank you, and not administration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my last comment, thank you.
Unless the board would like to form a transportation committee.
It's easier to strike the word.
I'm just kidding, it was a joke.
We could move to delegate to the business administrator.
You really don't want to do that, trust me.
Let's beat up on the chairman again.
Oh, yeah? Oh, that...
Nope, it's not good.
Jamie, good?
I'll say it.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments?
Nope.
None, none.
Besides these, for Phillips's notes, are you gonna just move forward?
So we've made a few amended changes to the policies, I've taken notes on those for, for Mrs. Kennedy, and we are tabling DF, and we're tabling, um, DFF, DFA, and EC, those three, for further review. So all in favor of the motion for first and second read as amended? So only favor of the motion for first and second read as amended.
Aye.
Aye.
The kid's humanamus, looks like.
No, she'll have those changed.
Thank you.
Complete your presentation.
You have to speak up into the mic, people can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, that completes her presentation. I've got a heck of an echo, I don't know about you. I just want to make sure the secretary gets everything, and Pam's going to forward everything to you, so. Okay. Okay. Do we write down that these times would be?
We're fine. Oh, we've got 12 minutes.
That's what I'm saying.
Should we switch 8-2 and 8-1 and talk about the SST?
Oh, great idea, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We're ahead, so we don't...
I know, I know, I know we're ahead.
We could do 8-2 right now, that's fine.
Heck of an idea.
So I think you've all had an opportunity to read this, the, just for the community's awareness. Every 20 years, our relationship with the Seacoast School of Technology. We have a 20-year contract with them, and it's, it's due at this time.
Can I just hold you one second?
Yeah.
Just so that we do it legally correct. I have a motion to take something out of order, made by Jamie. Seconded by, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So we'll take 8-2 out of order.
Just got shushed. I'm just kidding, it's fine, it's fine. I, okay, so the SST contract, the Seacoast School of Technology, while we have some parents here, it's nice to say that the Seacoast School of Technology is an absolutely fantastic opportunity for our students. They've really taken the idea of vocational school and turned it on its head. And I'm looking to our student representative because he's nodding vigorously.
Yeah, it's awesome. It's a very, very good experience for anybody interested in any of those fields.
Yeah, it's incredible. I was absolutely amazed when I toured the Seacoast School of Technology. They, they have a fantastic, completely up-to-date automotive program, including all of the computer-related work that would happen with cars, their welding facility, the computer, computer training for our programming is amazing. I mean, every program there is fantastic, and we have 100 students or more that benefit from this program. And I have been on, I'm a member of the board. Each district sends one superintendent and one board member to serve on their board, so we work collaboratively to develop this agreement. And I just wanted to share that I certainly support this agreement, and I hope the board will as well. If the board votes to support the agreement, then the chair will sign, and Mrs. Kennedy will notarize, and then that will be sent back over to the SST. That's the process.
Still, oh, thank you, I've still got 10 minutes.
I found two typos on page 7, part 6.
You could just email those to me, I'll send them to them.
And on page 16.
Yep, that's fine, we'll send that over, but...
Do you need a motion, Jim?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second someone?
Sure, I'll say it.
I'll move it, for sure, yep, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, they're reversed, but that's okay. Discussion, all in favor?
Yes. That's a yes.
Yeah. Okay, so...
We'll take a five-minute break, that's fine.
I think that five minutes would be great. We publish the times, and by the rule, we have to pretty much take close to those times. So we're 10 minutes early, so let's take a five-minute break. By the time we sit down, it'll be quarter off. If I can have your attention, we can get started.
You're dying the road, he says, no I'm not.
Next on the agenda is, yeah, I call it grade level configuration, K-5 presentation and discussion by the superintendent.
All right, so I, I, I first of all, just wanted to take a moment. I know, if you can't hear me in the back, can you raise your hand? Can you hear me okay? All right, great. I just wanted to thank all of the people who are here this evening. It's really nice to see parents and staff and administrators here to talk about these important issues. So I just want to take a moment and talk to you about the context of what's going on. When I was hired, I spent roughly 125 to 150 hours meeting with people individually in one-hour sessions, listening to what was happening in our community and our district. And there were a few essential questions that came out of that process. One essential question was, why is our cost per pupil where it is, and our academic achievement isn't congruent with what we're paying? Another essential question, and one thing that really made me curious about what was happening, was the observation that students didn't get support for academic needs unless they were in special education. That really bothered me. Some parents said to me, if you don't have an IEP, you don't get the help that your kid needs. And I just want you to hear me that I can't live with that. So I went to work. After many, many hours of conversations, I presented an entry plan. And in that entry plan, in the summary, I clearly outlined that there is a major problem with our school district. We do not have intervention for academic needs prior to special education referral. The Bakers School houses 350 students. They have one para-professional for reading from title grants, and one for math. I would akin that to pouring a cup of water on a forest fire. No, that sounds dramatic, but it's true. We don't have enough for our kids, so where is the money going? That was my next question. Memorial School has 250 students with one para for reading and one for math. Again, like pouring a cup of water on a forest fire. When 30% of our kids are passing our state assessments in math, we aren't meeting their needs. I'm not okay with that. So my question was, how do we meet their needs, and why are the taxes what they are? Why aren't we meeting their needs with a $35 million budget? Couldn't figure it out, so I started to dig in the dirt, like any good gardener. Brought me to this conclusion. We have too many facilities for the number of students that we serve. That's the bottom line. You can agree with me, you can disagree with me, no problem, no hurt feelings. When you have 1,595 students and five properties that you're maintaining, your money is going into properties, not student learning. I accept that if that's the will of the community, it's not a problem. But I have the answer to the question. The answer is that our money is going into facilities, not student learning. So why reorganize? First of all, the reorganization meets the needs of all students. This reorganization plan provides the academic support that students need prior to special education referral, and it also helps our kids to have better social and emotional learning. I will show you why that is in these slides. It minimizes the tax impact. It helps us to spend our dollars effectively to meet the needs of our kids. And it strengthens the Sanborn community. It's a short presentation tonight, I only have about 15 slides. And what's going to happen, I just want everyone to know, because once I share these slides, there's going to be some really strong feelings in the room, and I'm okay with that. But we have a choice before us this evening. Thank you. Are the feelings going to bring us together to solve problems, or are they going to divide us? I can't make that decision for you. You have to make that as an individual person. All I can do is tell you the facts of what I see as someone who's been asked some really difficult questions. Last spring, we hired NESDEC, the New England School Development Council, to study our enrollments in facilities. In August, they presented a plan to the school board that essentially affirmed my point that we have too many facilities for the number of students. In September of 2018, we had a community forum facilitated by Todd DeMitchell from UNH so that we could hear the concerns and perspective of the community with regard to this study. And the school board then surveyed all constituents and considered the feedback that was presented. As a result of that survey, the school board recognized that the first choice of the community was to move 7th and 8th grade to the high school facility and have K-6 schools at Memorial and Bakers. But there were some problems when we studied that plan for five months. It didn't really quite fit. So in October of 2018, the board asked me to study that very item, and I worked on that with my administrative team and a variety of people for over five months. Also in the fall of 2018, the board recognizes that the Articles of Agreement had to be modified by a 2/3s majority vote before we could even consider a change to our pre-K-5 structure. So in November of 2018, the school board generated a warrant article to address the Articles of Agreement. This warrant article also addressed a concern that we were out of compliance with state law with regard to the definition of an elementary school in a cooperative school district. An elementary school in a cooperative school district must be grades 1 through 6, or 1 through 8, or kindergarten through 6, or kindergarten through 8. The Bakers School was not in compliance. Now, to be transparent, that was not a problem unless someone made it a problem. But when we start, start talking about significant community change, people can get upset and make things a problem. The warrant article passed, and to say that I was shocked is putting it lightly. Getting a 2/3s majority vote for any warrant article is virtually impossible. I was sitting, I remember very clearly looking at the numbers and calling Brian Stack, who was helping with the spreadsheet, and saying, Brian, is this really right? And he's like, yeah, I checked it three times, we couldn't believe it. We didn't have a plan for this. So I knew that when I came to the next school board meeting, I'd better be thinking about what that plan would be, because I had a feeling that the board would be asking. And sure enough, on March 15th, the school board asked me to present and discuss the elementary reorganization. On April 3rd of 2019, I presented an analysis of the middle school closure per the board's directive in September. And on April 10th, today, I'm presenting the overview of moving pre-K-3 to the Bakers School and 4 to 6 to the elementary school. And I'm sure that you're wondering why. I will share that with you in a moment. These are the next steps that I'm proposing for the school board in our community. After today, tomorrow morning, I will open up a second survey that addresses only pre-K to 5. We would like all of you and any community members, school board members, anyone, to, teachers, students, anyone who has a question, submit it into the survey, and we're going to develop a comprehensive FAQ that will be presented to everyone on March 1st. That FAQ will give you the answers to your questions to consider before May 15th. On May 15th, the board is inviting the public to come to a community forum so that you have an opportunity to share your thoughts and feelings about the proposed plan and the answers to the specific questions. Certainly, we'd be happy to answer clarifying questions, but I just want everyone to know that the purpose of the May 15th meeting is not question and answer. The purpose of that meeting is to share your concerns or quests or thoughts about or support for whatever plan has been provided. So I just want everyone to understand that we're happy to clarify, but the more that you communicate with me or the board prior to that night, the more accurate information that you'll have to make your point of view heard. On June 5th and 19th, the school board will deliberate, and I am asking that the school board makes a decision at the latest on June 19th, because we start budgeting for 2020 in August. Folks think it's a ways away, 2021. It's not, we're planning for 2021, starting in August. So it's important to understand that we need to know the direction as administrators. A lot of people have asked me, what's your opinion? And my response has been, it's up to the community. It's my job to give you the information. I will tell you that my opinion is, I need intervention to help your kids learn. And if this is how it's funded, that's fine. But you'll see some figures that will show you and help you to make a decision as a community. The Bakers School, if we had pre-K, K, grade 1, grade 2, and grade 3, we would be able to reduce four teaching positions and promote and provide intervention for kids and maintain class sizes of 18, 16, 20.2, and 18. We certainly recognize that grade 6, I'm sorry, grade 2 is a spot to watch, and we may need an additional teaching position for that location. Here's a map of the Bakers School. You can see that in the left, there'd be a wing of second-grade classrooms. And you can see on the right that the part of the third grade would be upstairs. And then when you look at the next page, you can see the other three third-grade classes are right at the top by the phone number, the fax number. These maps will be available online, and you'll have an opportunity to look at them. I want to remind everyone that these maps are estimates, but they're pretty accurate. The team worked really hard. I was really surprised to see how well all the staff fit into the Bakers School for grades pre-K to 3. When we did the K to 6 analysis, there were some concerns about teachers needing to be on carts, and there was some concern about the special ed programming. Those concerns are rectified by having a pre-K-3 school at the Bakers School. At the Memorial School, grades 4, 5, and 6 also come out to be a reduction of two teaching positions for a total of five positions that would support intervention for our district. Because we have the layout that we have right now, we need more classroom teachers than we have students because we have smaller groups in two different schools. When you put them together, the efficiency increases. Here again, I was very impressed to see that the Memorial School lays out perfectly to have grades 4, 5, and 6. You can see that grade 4 would have its own ring, wing on the lower right-hand corner, end up in the middle, grades 5 and 6 would have their own wing so that they could collaborate. And my hope would be that students would switch classes and work together in a teaming situation. But that would be up to the principal, the curriculum director, and the, and the teachers. Special education programming would have some efficiencies. I worked with Mrs. Guterman and the administration. And again, these are estimated savings, but we're estimating approximately $150,000 in savings. And the benefits are way more than the savings. We'd have more efficient and effective grouping of students for related services. We'd have one special education teacher per grade level with an estimated caseload of between 14 and 24 students. And we would have two at the kindergarten level and two preschool-level special education teachers for early specialized support. I want to remind everyone that there are very few items of research that are congruent regardless of where you look. And one of the most important pieces of research that I have never seen contesting data for is that students who receive adequate intervention before the end of second grade are far more likely to succeed after second grade. And the reason is this. Before second grade, you're learning to read. After second grade, you're reading to learn. And when you get behind, and you're behind going into third and fourth grade, catching up takes years. If we catch you up in first grade and kindergarten, your chances of success are exponentially higher. And that is the part that's affecting our high school. So you have to understand that there's a symbiotic relationship between the elementary school and the high school. If we aren't helping kids in pre-K 2, they're not succeeding later in life. If you want to see a really angry child, put a ninth grader in a, in a history class where they can't read the text. They look very different than in second grade. So the estimated financial implications for creating a pre-K 2 and a 4, 5, 6 building is that we would save approximately $658,000, and then we would spend approximately $676,000 for a net cost of $18,000. But we would fund almost $950,000 in literacy and math intervention for our students without raising taxes. That's the part that everybody really needs to think about. When you look at the total cost analysis of the annual savings versus cost, the elementary reorganization saves us $658,000 approximately. The middle school reorganization saves us $748,000 approximately. That's in year two, remember, in year one, there were capital improvements to the high school that would, that would stop us from saving the money in year one. So this chart, as I put in the top, does not include the one-time costs for the high school facility. The total expenses for the literacy and math support were $966,500. There were some other items in there, like the central office move and other things that need to occur, but compared to the support, they're minimal. So after everything's paid for at the end of year two, we would still have $439,000 that could be reallocated to other supports for either supporting teacher pay or... supporting teacher pay or giving relief to our taxpayers. The benefits, this is the most important part. I want to be clear. These benefits are the things that I identified in my entry plan as being important. There's two ways to fund these, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. Student achievement, we would focus our financial resources on student learning instead of facilities. The social and emotional growth, having students together from pre-K twelve creates a stronger sense of the Sanborn community. When the kids come together in sixth grade, it's the Newton kids and the Sanborn kids. If they all go to kindergarten as one group, they'll be the Sanborn kids from the day they meet each other. And I just, that makes me have goosebumps, right? Because I want them to be a community like we all are. We'd have more grade-level teachers. The power of four to five teachers, research is very clear that teachers do way better when there are four or five teachers to collaborate. Right now, we have situations where we have two teachers in a grade level at one school and maybe two or three at another. But when you put them together, it's very powerful because they share best practices in teaching. And it's the kind of thing that you really can't quantify because it's not just meeting times. It's time when they just catch up in the hallway, or they say, hey, I'm working on this and I'm struggling, or can you help my class with this, or could you come see me teach? It's an amazing thing. I've already talked about the funding for intervention for academics. And then it also, I mentioned before, it solves the issues with space and cramped quarters in the K six configurations. I didn't really love the pre-K six configuration. It was tight, especially at Bakersfield. This solves that problem completely. The consistency of student instruction and outcomes, I have heard, the one thing I have heard consistently is that the kids are learning different things at our elementary schools and coming to the middle school with different skills. That has to be fixed regardless of whatever decision we make with our physical layout. But certainly, having pre-K in two in one building and four, five, or pre-K in three in one building and four, five, six in another makes that kind of coordination far easier. There's efficiencies in professional development for teachers. When we bring groups in from the outside to train our teachers, it is way more efficient than having them go to two different buildings. Efficiencies in special education services, there was a slide for that earlier, and increased academic intervention potentially reduces special education referrals. So I've worked in a school where we've done this type of intervention. When I was hired as a principal of a pre-K two school, we had seventy-four percent of our students reading at grade level. We organized a program very similar to the one that I'm proposing to you as a district. Within four years, we moved our achievement to the point where eighty-nine percent of our students were reading at grade level, six percent were one level below, and the other five percent were more than one level below, but they were making more than a year's growth. This works. It works, but it's hard work. We have to align our curriculum, our instructional practices, and we have to work together. But we did reduce our special education referrals by five percent when we did this work, and I would expect the same for our district. We're currently at about twenty to twenty-one percent of our students. Jody, is that correct? Yeah, twenty to twenty-one percent of our students are receiving special education services. So I asked parents about this, and they said, well, if you don't get an IEP, you don't get the help you need. I don't want to wait ninety days for an IEP for my kid to get help. I want my kid to get help the day the teacher notices that they need a hand. And that's why we need intervention services for our district. There is some future work that we have to do, just like I said last week. The memorial evacuation location needs to be rectified if the middle school is closed. We need to provide a couple of permanent structured classrooms at the memorial school because the modular classrooms are at the end of life. That would be part of that capital improvement plan that we've been talking about with the business office. The relocation of the current front office at the memorial school to address safety concerns, I would certainly propose that that gets funded. I estimate that to be about sixty thousand dollars. We'll have to set a limit on the busing. So I've heard the concern about busing for elementary kids. How long is my kindergarten child going to be on the bus? And my answer to that is as long as we decide. We set the contracts with the bus company. If we say to the bus company, your child, we want the children to be on the bus for thirty minutes, we just pay the cost to have that. They have less stops, and they have less turns and roads to go on. It's more of a direct route. That's not a problem at all, folks. And whoever has been saying that, I want to just correct them publicly. Frankly, it's somebody who wrote a letter to the newspaper. But I just want you all to hear me that that's absolutely false, right? There's no concern about the bus runs. That's a decision that's one hundred percent within district control. The other thing that I wanted everyone to understand is that my kids went to a pre-K two school in a four, five, six building, pre-K three and four, five, six. And they staggered the start and end times so that you could pick your kids up and still be fine with getting kids at the end of the day if you needed to. And I know that's a concern for parents who would have kids at Bakersfield and Memorial. I had siblings, my son's thirteen and ten. And at one point, we had one at the pre-K two school, and at another point, we had one at the upper school, and now we have one at the upper school and the middle school. It's fine. We just have to solve those problems, and we have a lot of ideas about how to solve those problems. But I just want you all to know I'm thinking about it on that level, right? Because really, ultimately, we're all moms and dads trying to get our kids to and from school, and we're trying to help them to be successful. So I just wanted to summarize by, again, mentioning that the key components to this plan, it meets the needs of our students. That is the most important thing. I ask myself the following question every day through this process. If this was my son, would I send him to what I'm proposing? My ten-year-old son? And the answer is unequivocally yes, I would send my son. I'm fine with it. The second is the minimization of tax impact. We cannot continue to spend and go as fast as we've been going. With the passing of the two teachers' contracts and the par's contracts and the teachers' contracts, the next two years, we're going to have a one point two million dollar increase in our budget. Without adding anything for kids. If we added one point five million dollars in intervention to one point two million in teachers' contracts, and then we spend one point six million dollars on the middle school, we're looking at close to four point five million, three million of which would be annual. If we do the reorganization plan, all of that money, it's basically a flat tax impact. I want you all to understand what we're talking about tonight because, as your superintendent, if the will of the community and the board is to keep our schools the way they are, I will support that. If the will of the community and the board is to change the schools, I will do the heavy lifting to make it happen. But I just want to remind you all of one important point. Some people emailed me saying, well, what do teachers think about this? And what do staff members think about this? They don't like it. This isn't easy. This is hard for me to stand here and talk to you about this. But I want to be clear that everyone recognizes that they need intervention for the kids. Every teacher unanimously has said that would make things work. We know what they need to know. We know what they need to do to practice it. We need help to get it done, every teacher. And every teacher has said to me in small meetings of groups of five or six, we understand that a change is probably coming. Will you please just tell us when and what's going to happen because we want to know where we're going? But I don't need to survey people, the administrators or the teachers, to know that they don't like it. Who would like this much change? It's scary. And I need you all to know that we recognize that, but we also feel strongly that this change would strengthen the Sanborn community. I thank you very much for being here tonight, and I just wanted to mention that we are not taking questions this evening. The questions will go in the survey that I'm going to post in about ten minutes to Facebook or put online. You will have the opportunity to enter your questions in there, and I'll answer the questions in the FAQ. And then your opportunity to talk to the board will be on May fifteenth. This is a lot to digest, and there's a lot of emotion in the room tonight. And I want everyone to have an opportunity to take the forty-eight hours that our bodies need to think about it and get the feelings out so that we can talk about this rationally because ultimately, we set the tone for our children. And if we're calm and rational and working through this, then the children will see that and feel safe. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
The next is public comment. As I said at the last meeting, we understand this is a passionate issue. In public comment, the school board doesn't usually respond because it's just that, public comment. We're going to have the whole process of sending information out to you. You're going to send it back to us, and on the fifteenth...
Well, no, early May, the FAQ will come out so that people can read it prior to the
Right, and then the fifteenth...
Is when they can speak to the board.
That's when we're going to have the interesting meeting, let's call it. Now, there's one other thing. Some people are going to say things other people aren't going to like. Please keep your personal comments to yourself. Some people are going to love things other people said. You know, I know people want to clap and say, yes, we agree with you, but it does take time. That's okay. You have three minutes. I really don't want to gavel you, okay? I won't gavel you, I just say, three minutes is up. But if you could, say what you want to say, by all means. If someone's already said, you know, the ceiling is white, you don't necessarily have to say that the ceiling is white. So if your comments has already been said, if you can. Again, this is a passionate situation, so if you reiterate what someone said, we understand that, you know, don't worry about it. So with that, would I think of anything I didn't cover? So here we go. Who wants to be the first contestant on The Price is Right? You've got a podium right there. I thought it was going to be the young lady behind you, but she, you know, the little girl with the glasses, looked like she was going to start walking down. Yeah, what do you got? Come on down. I thought she would, believe it or not, I did think she was going to start walking down, didn't you? Oh, would you please give your name and the town you come from? Phyllis Hess will take all that down.
Cheryl Gannon, Kingston, Sanborn Regional School District. I'm going to ask some questions, and I understand you will not be answering them, but I'm just going to throw them out there. Wondering what qualifications the para-professionals who have been proposed to be hired, what qualifications they would have to be teaching students? There was some mention that currently, there's one para for reading and one for math. I would hope that the people who are going to be hired to teach are qualified teachers and not just people who are reading to kids. But they are truly addressing the needs of the students. We used to have a program here called RTI, Response to Intervention. I'm wondering if that's still in effect and if it is, how successful is it? Superintendent mentioned learning to read till age two and reading to learn, or grade two and reading to learn after grade two. I've always heard that was grade four. Are we on the fast track? Getting them to read by age, by grade two? Maybe we're pushing too hard. Maybe they need some time to play and learn through experience and not have so much rigor. Wondering what the NESDEC study cost? We have too many facilities. What's the status of the seminary, the old seminary campus that we've been trying to...
Something I'm remiss, if we could stay on the agenda, we haven't covered the seminary building and stuff tonight.
We're talking about facilities, and it was mentioned we have five campuses.
I guess you could wrap it into that. Okay.
So that, I would assume that's why we got in. That is one of the reasons why we are looking at this because that campus is not being used, not productive. I also wondered why it's only Bakersfield that's not in compliance with the Articles of Agreement? I thought both schools, Memorial and Bakersfield, went to grade five. I thought that was the issue that... There was a mention that there are, that teachers need time to collaborate, that if there were only two teachers teaching a grade level, they didn't have that time, that valuable time to collaborate. I was wondering, how many do we have of grade levels that only have two teachers? And then I guess my last concern is question and answer. I like question and answer. I like looking at a person. So I understand that it's probably more controlled to have questions emailed and then written questions emailed back or posted. I really wish we'd have time to actually have questions and answers, people talking to each other. Because I think that builds a lot of trust when people look at each other and view them as people. Thank you.
If you would like to speak, if you could line, just like we do at the deliberative, like we did the last meeting, kind of line up so I'll know how many people... How you doing?
Hi, Heather Ring, I'm Newton. I think my one comment is, we as a community worked hard to pass the teacher contracts and the para contracts, and I worry about losing teachers in par's that are really amazing to our district and cutting teachers and cutting those positions may be detrimental to our kids. And I also want to ensure that the board and the community feels like there's trust in between the two because I don't know if the trust is still there. Thank you.
What did the teacher say, boys? How many of you did I have in class, right? You never paid attention to me in class, either.
Hi, I'm Ursula Gianusa. I have a son at the Bakersfield School in the first grade. My biggest concern is the special education program. He, my son, is autistic and amongst many other kids in the class, they have one-on-one par's. And my biggest concern is splitting up the school so that after third grade, they go to another school, and we're reducing the amount of special education. And I understand early intervention, I get all that. It's going to help kids who aren't on the spectrum, but with the rising numbers of kids diagnosed with autism, how is that going to affect them when they go to fourth, fifth, and sixth grade and they don't have that? The par's are amazing. I can't say enough about them. My son wouldn't be in public school if it wasn't for the par's. They deal with blood, sweat, and tears, and I get those emails. They deal with all of that. So I guess that's my biggest concern, that we're looking into cutting that, and if it wasn't for them, these kids wouldn't be in school. And like I say, every year, autism's on the rise. It's not just special education. These kids, they're so smart, and they're just growing immensely. My son was diagnosed, they said he would never talk, he would never be potty-trained. Put him in a special school, and because of the work of the par's, he doesn't stop talking. And they helped us with potty training, and he makes sure everybody has to go to the bathroom before we leave the house. But they are an asset, and we can't cut that. Like I said, if it wasn't for them, he wouldn't be in the school system. He wouldn't be reading, he wouldn't be writing, he wouldn't be talking till midnight every night. But again, I just don't want to see that lax, and I'm really concerned about that because there's quite a few of them in the classroom. I've spent time in the classroom, and I don't want to see those kids fall behind. So just, I know we're looking at the whole picture and helping kids who aren't quite there in the middle ground, but I don't want to take away from all of the work that went into helping them as well.
I am going to respond to this just to be clear that we have great difficulty filling para positions. And there are only three para positions in this whole proposal K that may be cut, and those would be positions that aren't currently filled or that become empty. And the other piece is that there may be movement from the middle school when the seventh and eighth grade go to the high school down to the elementary schools. We haven't even addressed that yet. All of this is an estimate.
Right, right, and I understand.
I just wanted to share that every figure is an estimate.
Right, and my concern is grouping kids together to help. No offense, if you put three autistic kids in a room and told them they're doing speech therapy, your head's going to explode. We tried, it's not going to work. I know, we got three of them in my neighborhood. We go for a walk, one ends up in a tree, one ends up in the river, and we don't know where the other one went. Like, you can't put them in the same room and expect them to do the same task. They're getting there, but we can't cut that. So that's my big concern as somebody who fights day and night for this. Just please consider not cutting that as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let me just say this because this is, to me, it is important. One, the thing, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi, Cindy McLaughlin, Kingston. I had a quick question, well, not a question, let me rephrase that. My concern, as you said, with the facilities, we have five facilities for sixteen hundred students. Granted, only four of those facilities are being used. If we were to do this proposal, the middle school would be empty. Even if we did the six, seven, eight from last week, the middle school would be empty. So then, what's the guarantee that's going to get filled? Are we going to be in the same position? We have five buildings, and then only three are being used? I'm just curious. I know it was brought up, the middle school, oh, we could house this place, they could come in... come in. That's no guarantee. We we still have to pay for the middle school if it's still standing, correct? There'll still be some? That's just my concern. Are we still going to have five buildings?
Can I, I I I really, this is the last thing I'm going to answer, even if I really want to after this. Because I really want to help because these questions are fantastic. And and that is a real concern. You can't market a building that isn't available. So this is the first time that the board has seen this plan, and it's this, really only been barely a week, but I will say this, that one of two things will happen. I I would not advocate to this community getting rid of the middle school property because if we do the things that we're talking about doing, our academic achievement may change significantly. And you don't know what the future holds, and land is really hard to find. I certainly would be willing to market the building to other organizations and potentially rent it, but there's no plan for that at this time. We've had one group approach us who is aware of what we're going through right now, and and we would chat with them, but there's nothing to report yet. So one of two things would happen. Either the building would be rented to another organization and utilized by them, and any repairs or changes would be done at their cost, or the building would be kept at a temperature warm enough so that it doesn't deteriorate, but not nearly at the cost of the level of use. The seminary property is still being used significantly because of the Swayze Gym in the fields. Everyone forgets that it's all linked. So the seminary property is linked as a group. There's really only two buildings on that property that are not currently being utilized. And there are people who are curious about those buildings and I'm meeting with and talking to. So there are a lot of moving parts, but I just want everyone to hear that certainly there will be a conversation about what to do with the middle school, should it be no longer in use for district purposes, but we're so far away from that, we need to first decide if we're going to reorganize, and then we'll start making plans for what the administrators and I have lovingly called in the weeds. There's a lot of weeds to clear out once a decision is made, and we'll be working really hard to do that collaboratively with the community.
Can I just be clear? I thought you said this is the first time the board has seen this proposal that you're doing. I wasn't sure about that.
This is the first time anyone's seen it. I just wrote it Monday.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Hi, Chuyn Corvo, Newton. One thing I have tried really hard to get on board with this. I was even sitting on the fence for a little bit. I was like, okay, let me listen to all of this and then before I make a decision. But I just kind of want to just bring something that I felt like was very skimmed over. In this, there is the reduction of six teachers possibly. I don't care what spin you put on it, it is not going to benefit our teachers to take our kids to take six teachers away. And the other thing I just want to stress is I completely understand the plight of having a special education child. I am very fortunate that my children don't fall into this. But I also feel like the average student in everything that's proposed gets swept under the rug. Taking away six, six teaching positions in such a small school district is huge, and I just want to make sure everyone in this room heard that.
I I I'm actually going to address that. Last year, we reduced seven teachers in the school district. I want to say two things. One, I'll bet nobody noticed the difference in the education of the children. And number two, we didn't rift one of them. All right? Every year, teachers leave the district, teachers come to district. So it is not our intent to be rifting people. We haven't in the past. We didn't do it last year. All right, and seven, and we have seven fewer teachers than we did last year. So as far as, I I I'm concerned about Facebook and stuff, but as far as rifting teachers or getting rid rid of teachers, that I would be very surprised, as I was last time. I I would have been very surprised. We're not going to be saying you're pink slipped. All right? Just like we did last year. Not one teacher was pink slipped or rifted or let go.
I I think it's important to note that we're going to try not to.
Well, I don't think...
Because between the middle school and the elementary schools, there are a number of positions, but I want to remind everyone that the class sizes are still around 18 on average. And I I have to tell you that we're also adding four teaching positions that our staff could potentially fill to do math and literacy interventions. So six, take away four is really two. And that's the facts. I'm not trying to be difficult or push back. All you have to do is read the slides. But I want to remind everyone, we're starting to get emotional now. And emotionality lowers our intelligence by 35%. Read the slides and slow down. Right? It is really hard. I'm emotional. It is hard. Right? We're talking about people's lives and kids. I hear you. I do anyway. I hear you. This is really hard. But just give yourself a couple of days to slow down and then read the slides again, and feel free to email or call me. I'm happy to help you.
Mary Seer from Kingston. I first want to thank you, Mr. Ambrose, for this comprehensive report and that of last week. I want to thank your administrators for taking the time and really putting in heartfelt effort to kind of come up with a solution that could work for everybody. And I also want to say you're kind of stealing my thunder because I actually prepared a little statement. Nope, that's okay. It's funny. I'm talking, and I want to say that the reports that you gave us last week and tonight centered on redistricting our schools. They contain a lot of data, both about the current state of affairs and possibilities for the future. These proposed changes are a big deal to this community, and they've understandably elicited a tidal wave of emotional response. Rational thinking is the ability to consider all the relevant variables of a situation that includes facts, data, opinions, emotions, judgments, et cetera, and to organize this and analyze this data and information to arrive at a sound conclusion. The school board's job in this process is to think rationally about the proposed changes, to sift through all the data and emotions, and arrive at a sound conclusion which supports the best interests of our community as a whole. We all want better outcomes for our students. We want to be able to attract and retain the best educators and to provide the most rewarding learning opportunities and outcomes possible for all of our students. It's in everyone's best interest to support these objectives. Nobody in their right mind wishes to undermine or degrade the reputation of our school district or the property values of the towns which support it. School boards of the recent past have enacted changes that not everybody has agreed with. From from things as seemingly benign as sliding in full-day kindergarten after voters had turned it down at the polls to the more wide-sweeping change of adopting competency-based education. Guess what? Things may not be optimal for everybody, and there's always room for improvement, but the sky didn't fall. That's largely because the citizens and the school leaders alike didn't allow it to happen. Priorities change, variables are in constant motion, and we are fortunate to now have a superintendent who's willing and able to put it all out there for us to consider in order to move our district forward. There's tremendous opportunity here to right-size the district and to redirect newly-found resources to where they can bring the most positive change for learning. The school board will be deliberating these issues in the coming year. It's our job as vested members of this community to ensure that relevant variables remain on the table. Please, stay involved. Continue to voice your wishes and concerns. Absolutely, whole school school board members accountable to act in the best interests of our community, but for goodness sake, please stop the animosity and the distrust long enough to realize that we all want the same thing for our community. We all stand to benefit from redistricting our schools, and we need to trust that the folks that we put in place to do that job are going to do it to benefit everybody.
Come on down. You're the next contestant on The Price is Right.
Adam Mullin, Kingston. I would just like to say that teachers are not a dime a dozen. As a Sanborn graduate, I had one who, the day that I walked across the stage as a senior in high school, gave me a cord, and that was the cord that sat around my neck when I got my master's degree. That was the cord that sat around my neck as I opened my acceptance to my EDD program that starts in June. We are not in a district where teachers and paras are to be treated as if they are anything less than exceptional. As an educator in this district, teaching third-grade inclusion, I've had the honor of teaching with exceptional para educators who are above and beyond individuals who read to kids. They are a lifeline, a support. They're there for me every day, pushing me to be a better teacher and to do what's best for kids. So I think that we, as a district, need to make sure that we're respecting that and honoring that and supporting the people who work every day to support families and students.
Vanessa Matias in Kingston. Just one thing I just want to say to you guys. I urge you to slow down. In no way, shape or form, am I saying I'm against change or change is not inevitable. I just want to make sure that you're all taking your time, considering all the facts and all the impacts of your decision, exploring different options and doing your homework. For some of you, this will be the most important decision you will make in your role on the school board. Anything great is not built overnight. We do not need to put a timestamp on this one. Have multiple forum, town forum discussions, question and answers. I didn't like the fact that Mr. Ambrose had said that, you know, the board needs to make a decision by June. That's two months. This is a huge decision to make in two months. I also urge you to put before the voters the plans to be voted on and approved. It's not your just your decision to be made.
If you notice the superintendent, I kind of confer about who wants to address this, if we want to address it. This move is not for this September. This is next year, if we even do it, you know, we haven't decided yet. So we're looking at 2020. So this is not something that, you know, we're going to do in a couple of months. All right? So we're going to be making decisions. He's got a lot of work to do, facilities-wise, staff-wise, you name it. So we we have time to really, really look, look at this situation. All right? So just to let you know, it's not something for this September. Anyone else? Okay, now, it is imperative, changing a little bit. Any questions or issues you have, you send them to the superintendent. All right? I mean, this is a guy who probably many of you talked to him individually or on the phone. I mean, the poor guy has to put up with me two, three times a week when we have meetings. And if you, anybody who know me, a five-minute meeting is 45 minutes with me.
That's conservative, Pete.
So very important. I think one of the things that we can be very proud of this superintendent is that he is open and he will talk with you. But if you don't let us know your concerns, we can't help you with those concerns. So please, send them to us, all right? And you you're going to be one. You're going to send it on your email.
Oh, I've already sent out the survey and the slides from tonight on Facebook to everybody. I just wanted to have time.
We all know, we all know this, but we do it anyway. If it's on Facebook, it must be true, even though we know 90% of it probably isn't true. So if you see something on Facebook, give him a call. All right? Don't necessarily go by what somebody said, that somebody heard, that somebody else might have said. All right? Give us a call. We want to make sure you are vested in this. These are your children. This is your tax dollars. And we're not really blowing smoke there. I think everybody on this board will agree with you. We are absolutely trying to do the best. All right? So any last questions? Anybody want to say what I just said? I'm full of baloney. No? Okay. Okay, so we are going to move on, and what I would like to do is just make the announcements because we've got it on public. All right? So here's, do we have anything, board members, for next agenda for May 1st, I believe it is? Anyone think of anything? No? Okay.
We have some policies and we want to go over our school board goals.
School board goals? You got those fellows all right?
We have four policies and we have school board goals to discuss.
Okay. All right, so the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 1st, 2019, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM in the library of the Swayze, of the Swayze, Library of the Sanborn Regional High School. Okay, I'm going to call for a recess for about five minutes, and then we're going to be going into non-public, I believe. Anyone else have anything they want to bring up before we go into the non-public? Okay, so why don't we take a couple of minutes now and they can go start again?